Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Mangan.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Counselor Appolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Nine members present, Mr. President.
Thank you. Would the audience please stand and join the council in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the public with its stations, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk will read the first item on the agenda.
Mr. President, if I may, thank you very much. One of the employees of the city is probably going to be very upset with me for saying this, but I think it's such a big deal it should be acknowledged. Ashley Costa from ECTV, who is manning the cameras right now as we speak, is getting married soon. So, this is going to be her last meeting as a single woman, so we all wish her well. Congratulations and much happiness.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, and now, Mr. Clerk, if you would, first item on the agenda.
Item number one is a public hearing. It's an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon, who is present, in order funding the 2017 annual appropriation in the amount of $173,774,839.
Make a motion to open public hearing.
Motion made. Second, open public hearing. All in favor, some invite, saying aye. All opposed? Okay, we have opened the public hearing for the public hearing on the budget. Instead of our normal processing of our budget with the, in favor and those opposed, I'm going to open up if anybody would like to say anything at all about the budget for fiscal 2018, fiscal 2017. Is anyone would like to make any comment at all on our budget? Is there anyone that would like to make any comment at all on our budget? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask the clerks, the board, to close that part of the meeting. Motion made, second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, I'm going to...
There's no...
The order is on number 13.
Okay, at this time also, I would like to, I was remiss in saying this, but if everyone would please stand for a moment of silence for the folks that died in Florida. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Chairman.
Item number two is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon, who is present, to public hearing. A petition granting Verizon New England permission to place on the ground conduit in Santilli Highway.
Yes, motion made, second, to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is open. Would you like to invite anyone before you?
We have the gentleman before us.
Yes, please, sir, if you would. State your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, my name's Everett Bryan. I'm a right-of-way engineer with engineering and data solutions, representing Verizon New England at 125 High Street in Boston. Our petition this evening is to place approximately 25 feet of underground conduit from an existing joint-in-home pole number 10-30, located on the easterly side of Santilli Highway, to proposed Verizon manhole number SH-1. For proposed manhole, SH-1, propose to place approximately 48 feet of underground conduit in a southerly direction to connect to existing conduit located in a traffic alley, as shown on the attached petition plan. This conduit is necessary to provide service to the new wind casino that's under construction at this time. Expect to start it as soon as we have a permit from the Department of Conservation and Recreation that has a portion of this conduit on their jurisdiction in Santilli Circle.
Counselor McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. What's the timeframe on the permitting and when are you going to be starting down there?
We would like to start as soon as possible. Of course, the developer for the project wants us to start as soon as possible. We can't start until after this hearing, this petition is granted for the city of Everett portion of the conduit and the manhole, and the DCR permit is granted by the Department of Conservation and Recreation.
What's the anticipated time from DCR?
I would expect within two weeks.
Thank you.
Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bryan, I want to thank you for being here this evening. It seems to be in the past Verizon hasn't been able to attend various public hearings on other issues with regards to expansion and so forth. So, are you the man? Could you leave your card with our clerk of...
As surely will.
Because we've had some difficulties with double poles, and it seems that Verizon is probably the main culprit at this point. So, in the future, you'll be hearing from us on that matter, too. But I wish you luck, and we're in favor of the casino, and we want to see that move fast. Thank you very much. And I'll take, if you have two cards, I want to take one personally. Thank you. Excuse what a customary thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, are you here for the second one? You're here for the second hearing?
I was aware there was a second one for Verizon.
Thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it. Clerk will read item number three.
We refer it to the...
Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing.
We have to close the public hearing or we have to refer this out first, don't we?
Open it. You have to open it. Motion, open it. Motion made, second, open this item for public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I'll ask free time for those in favor of this item, and I'll also ask free time for those who are opposed. On item number two on the counter, on the agenda, is there anyone in favor of this petition? Is there anyone? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Counsel. My name, my name's Mike Cordima from National Grid for this second hearing thing. We just petitioned for the ongoing construction.
We're still on the first one.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Stay right there. Stay right where you are. Okay. Is there anyone in favor of item number two on the agenda? This is for the Santilli Highway. Is there anyone in favor of that? If I close that part of the hearing, is there anyone opposed to that petition? Is there anyone opposed to the petition? Is there anyone opposed to the petition? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public meeting.
Move to close public hearing.
Second. Motion made, second, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have closed...
Favorable action.
Motion for favorable action, second. Motion made, second, favorable action. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Appolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Three yeas, zero nays, you have passed the petition. Clerk, please read item number three on the agenda.
Item number three is also a public hearing, a petition from National Grid to construct a line of underground electric conduits at the intersection of Charleston and Bowden Street.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second, to open the public hearing. We haven't heard from the petitioner yet, though, but that'll be okay. All in favor of the public hearing being opened?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, but I'd like to hear from the petitioner first, so, sir, if you would.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is Mike Cordima from National Grid Electric, 170 Medford Street, Walden. There's going to be continuing construction going on for the wind casino rear access road. This is part of it, to install these 12 five-inch conduits from one of our new manholes down on Charleston Street for access in there.
Any questions at all? Any questions at all? If I may, from the chair, any objections?
No.
Sir, I read the request, and it had indicated that there was two sentences on that request, and the first sentence reads that you would like to install, and it doesn't say what you want to install. It ends, the sentence ends at a period.
Want me to read it, Mr. President?
Yes. We have it here. You'll read it.
Says, "Plant 21839748, Charleston Street. National Grid to install, beginning at a point approximately 225 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Charleston and Bowden, and continuing approximately 100 feet in a southwesterly direction."
Period. Doesn't say what you want to install in that sentence.
Okay.
And I would like the sentence to have said that you want to install an underground conduit, whatever it is.
But this sheet I have, I must have got it from the company, but it does continue on.
Yeah, but that's another sentence. I read sentence by sentence, you know, and we approve a sentence, and it says, you know, you can install whatever you want to install there. That sentence should have said you want to install the conduit. The next sentence, you could have said where you want to install it. That's all I'm saying.
So, should it read, "Charleston Street, National Grid to install, plus or minus 100 feet of 12 to 5-inch conduits, case of concrete from existing MH 659, Charleston Street, in a southwesterly direction toward the casino rear access road, beginning at a point approximately 225 feet, et cetera." Is that how it should read?
Yes. So, that's what you're going to install, is an underground conduit.
Right.
In that first part? Okay, so we get your word that you won't say the fact.
Mr. President, could we...
Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President, to the individual. Could we have that sheet, and we could give it to our clerk, so we have that?
We have it.
Oh, it's already there?
We do have it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
A customary thanks.
Thank you very much for appearing, sir.
Thank you, folks. Thank you.
Where this is a public hearing, I will again ask for those that are in favor of it and those that are opposed, or we've already opened the public hearing. So, is there any in the audience that's in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in the audience that's in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in the audience that's in favor of this petition? Hearing none, I hereby close that part of the public hearing. Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? I hereby declare that part of the public hearing closed.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion made, second, for favorable action. Any further discussion?
I'm going to close public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion made, second, close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, move.
Make a motion for favorable action.
Motion made, second, for favorable action. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by answering the clerk's call.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Appolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, could we please take items four, five, six, seven...
We have public participation.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Forgot about that.
So, we make a motion to open public...
Make a motion to...
Motion made, second, open public participation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public petition, patient has been opened. Is there any, anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council on any matter whatsoever? There was no sign up, right? No sign up?
There wasn't, earlier. Let me double check it.
Oh, okay. Oh, wait, we're going to send someone up. I'll ask again, you can talk on any subject matter you want to talk about. Doesn't make any difference. Okay. None, okay, we have none.
Make a motion to close public participation.
Motion made, second, to close public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, move, you have closed public participation.
Mr. Chairman, could we please take items four, five, six, seven, and 12 collectively?
You can't take them collectively. They're all different things.
We have the families.
We can read them individually, but I'm saying take...
Oh, they don't have...
Four, five, four, five, six, seven, and 12. Those are all appointees.
Okay. Does it, you want five?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Four. Wrong, wrong, four.
Five, right. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to make a...
Will we suspend the rules, take item number five?
Motion made, second, suspend the rule, take item number five. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk will read item five from the agenda.
Item number five is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon, who is present, in order confirming the appointment of firefighter Andrew Brennan to the position of lieutenant in the Everett Fire Department.
Second. Motion made, second, for favorable action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please answer the clerk's call.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Appolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order with the firefighter Brennan. Yeah. If anyone in the audience would like to come forward and take pictures, you may do so at this time, and please come and stand right inside the railing if you want to.
Raise your right hand. He's after me, I, Andrew Brennan. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a lieutenant in the Everett Fire Department, according to the best of my abilities and understanding, agreeably to the rules, regulations, laws, ordinances, and charter of the City of Everett, so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, will support the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America, will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. Congratulations.
Now, do the prayers now. Oh, here it is. You know it had a pass.
Boston firefighter Jay Allynch will be presenting Andrew with his badge.
Yes. Who went to the airport, and then have the family pictures and stuff? How's that? Okay? Yeah.
Mr. President, could we suspend the rules and take item number six?
Motion made, second, to suspend the rules and take item number six. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have expended, item number six is now before us. Clerk, please plead the count of the agenda.
Item number six, an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon, who is present, in order confirming the appointment of Lieutenant Sean Dottoli to the position of captain in the Everett Fire Department.
Favorable action.
Second.
Motion made, second, for favorable action. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Answer the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Appolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order with Lieutenant Sean Dottoli.
Raise your right hand. He's after me, I, Sean Dottoli.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a captain in the Everett Fire Department, to the best, according to the best of my abilities and understanding, agreeably to the rules, regulations, laws, ordinances, and charter of the City of Everett, so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, will support the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America, will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God.
Sean's grandfather and my father, retired lieutenant Roy Butler, will be presenting him with his badge.
Yeah.
I'd like to see all the gentlemen. I make a motion for five-minute recess.
We take them. Pictures? Hi. Would the families of the appointees please come forward so we can take some pictures? Gentlemen, don't leave. Would the families please come forward?
Where are we, on number four? Clerk, clerk will please read item number four.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Before item four is read, I just want to state that my, my wife is on the Board of Trustees, and she is slated for reappointment, so I'm going to leave the chamber during the reading and the voting of that piece.
Okay. Okay. Could I also announce that we've been, we have a visitor this evening? The Honorable Representative Joseph McGonigal is in the audience. Joseph, thank you for coming. Joseph. Okay. Now, number four.
Item number four is an order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon's President in order confirming the appointment of members to the Board of Library Trustees. Barbara Rocco for a one-year term ending June 2017. Dorothy Gomez for a two-year term ending June 2018. Marie Tarzey for a three-year term ending June 2019. Michelle Capone for a one-year term ending June 2017. Sandra Giuliano for a two-year term ending June 2018. Mary Fiorentino for a two-year term ending June 2018. Karen Martinelli for a three-year term ending June 2019. Stacy DiMaria for a three-year term ending June 2019. Christina DiMaria for a two-year term ending June 2018. Samantha Lambert for a one-year term ending June 2017. Danielle Rocco for a two-year term ending June 2018. Michellea, McKella, I'm sorry, Schlossberg for a one-year term ending 2017. And Robin Kelly for a three-year term ending June 2019.
Favourable action on the order.
Motion made, second for favourable action. Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor McGlaughlin first.
On the, on the motion, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say how thrilled I am to see this appointment before us this evening. I have known Stacia for a long time, and I know that she spends all of her days caring about animals across our community. Whether she was in this position or not, she cared more so for animals than anybody I've ever witnessed before. And I couldn't be more thrilled to vote on her appointment tonight and welcome her to our city, and she'll do a great job under this position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Counselor McGlaughlin. I've known Stacia for a few years, and, but, like I said, wonderful. We could not have a better person in this position. The man, the mayor hit it out of the ballpark. Honest to God, he hit it out of the ballpark with disappointment, and I commend him. I think everyone feels the same. I'm glad to have her back on, you know, working with the city, and I think it's great, and I wish her best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Any further discussion? Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone. Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order for the members of the library, Board of Library Trustees. Clerk will read item number seven.
Item number seven, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon's President in order confirming the appointment of Animal Control Officer Stacia Gorgonia as a special police officer.
Favourable action on the order?
Motion made, second for favourable action. Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor McLaughlin first.
On the, on the motion, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say how thrilled I am to see this appointment before us this evening. I have known Stacia for a long time, and I know that she spends all of her days caring about animals across our community. Whether she was in this position or not, she cared more so for animals than anybody I've ever witnessed before. And I couldn't be more thrilled to vote on her appointment tonight and welcome her to our city, and she'll do a great job under this position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Counselor McGlaughlin. I've known Stacia for a few years, and, but, like I said, wonderful. We could not have a better person in this position. The man, the mayor hit it out of the ballpark. Honest to God, he hit it out of the ballpark with disappointment, and I commend him. I think everyone feels the same. I'm glad to have her back on, you know, working with the city, and I think it's great, and I wish her best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Any further discussion? Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order for the members of the library, Board of Library Trustees. Clerk will read item number seven.
Item number seven, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon's President in order confirming the appointment of animal control officer Stacia Gorgonia as a special police officer.
Favourable action on the order?
Motion made, second for favourable action. Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor McLaughlin first.
On the, on the motion, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say how thrilled I am to see this appointment before us this evening. I have known Stacia for a long time, and I know that she spends all of her days caring about animals across our community. Whether she was in this position or not, she cared more so for animals than anybody I've ever witnessed before. And I couldn't be more thrilled to vote on her appointment tonight and welcome her to our city, and she'll do a great job under this position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Counselor McGlaughlin. I've known Stacia for a few years, and, but, like I said, wonderful. We could not have a better person in this position. The man, the mayor hit it out of the ballpark. Honest to God, he hit it out of the ballpark with disappointment, and I commend him. I think everyone feels the same. I'm glad to have her back on, you know, working with the city, and I think it's great, and I wish her best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Any further discussion? Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You have passed the appointment. Item number twelve, please. I'm sorry, what was that, Rosa?
Clerk will please take item number twelve.
Motion made, second to item number twelve. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? Item twelve is before you. Will clerk please read item number twelve.
Item number twelve is an order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon's President in order confirming the appointment of department heads. It's an order confirming the appointment of departments. Be it ordered by the City Council, City of Everett as follows. In accordance with the provisions of the City of Everett Administrative Code as promulgated pursuant to the Charter of the City of Everett, the following listed individuals duly recommended by is on to the mayor's department heads for terms so stated are hereby confirmed. Chief of Police Stephen Maisy, three-year term expiring June 2019. Emergency Communications Director Ed Mastercol, three-year term expiring June 2019. Parking Clerk Joanne Gregory, three years expiring June 2019. Human Resources Director Michael Vetrano, three years expiring June 2019. City Solicitor Colleen Mahir, three-year term expiring June 2019. Director of Planning Tony Souza, three years expiring June 2019. Director of Inspectual Services James Soper, three years expiring June 2019. Chief Financial Officer Eric Demas, three years expiring June 2019. Auditor Eric Demas, three years expiring June 2019. Treasurer Dominic D'Angelo, three years expiring June 2019. Procurement Officer Robert Marashi, three years expiring June 2019. Budget Director Lorraine Hurley, three years expiring June 2019. Assessor Pam Davis, three years expiring June 2019. I think you got the three-years-June-2019 thing down. Director of Public Works Jerry Navara. Operations Manager Kevin Noonan. Business Manager Assistant City Solicitor Lara Webby. Water Superintendent Ernie LaRiviere. City Engineer Bill O'Rourke. Director of Eldraffia, Zale Palmer. Director of Health and Wellness Center, Karen Avila. Director of Public Health, Elaine Silva. IT Director Kevin Dorgan. Communications Director Tom Philbin. Director of Health and Human Services, Steve Sapino, all three years expiring June 2019.
Counselor Mangan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. As in when Stacia, same thing. I feel, I don't believe the mayor could have a better team, people. Like we said, we've dealt with some people long-term, some people short-term, but they're all, most professional people. They're a great team for the city, and I'm really glad that the mayor has reappointed all these people. And I think it's going to be wonderful for the city going forward, and I look forward to working with them all going forward, and I wholeheartedly look forward to voting yes. Thank you.
I heard a motion made, second for favourable action. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk, P. Claus, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You have confirmed all appointments. Congratulations to all of you. Please be reminded that you need to appear in the clerk's office within 30 days to be sworn in, okay? If you have someone here that should be here, you know, make sure they also know the same. Thank you. Clerk will read item number eight.
Mr. President, if we could, I apologize for interrupting, but if we could take eight, nine, and 10, 11, together?
Second.
They are together, eight, nine, 10, 11.
Take them, clerk, to leave. All right, just clerk, read the reading and just read the donation and let them thanks.
Okay, motion made. Do we get a second?
Second.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the chief of police, his mother and father is here. Would that be uncooperative to swim in now?
It'd be fine with me.
If you want, yeah.
I mean, his mom and dad are here.
Can we ask the Maisy family to stay?
Call me, call me.
Mr. and Mrs. Maisy.
Will the Maisys stay, please stay? Stay. Chief, would you like to get sworn in now? Come forward, please.
They won't be here, you know.
Should we ask for the mayor to come down?
He's still there.
We can, go ahead, Mike.
Who got a camera?
Okay, please raise your right hand. Good afternoon to me. Aye, Stephen Maisy.
Aye, Stephen Maisy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As chief of the Everett Police Department.
As chief of the Everett Police Department.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the City of Everett.
Of the City of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the constitutions and laws of the Commonwealth.
And support the constitutions and laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Fred.
We'll do one big group one, and then you can, yeah. You want your brothers in? Oh, watch out, big L. Go easy. Watch your step there, somebody. Watch your step, go. Get right in there.
Amen, again, I can't take this anymore.
We're avoiding.
John, you're the shade.
Thank you. Watch your step.
We used to have a city council, a council of Rosie. We kind of sounded like Sarah. Really? She smells her stuff.
Pardon? No, why? You're hot? That company. Okay, sorry.
I'm waiting in front to call me back. Yeah. I'm waiting for a call back.
No, don't say that. I'm older than you. All right. Medium will come to order.
Mr. President, if we could take items eight through 11 collectively, waive the reading and just have the clerk read the amount and the donation and the letter of thanks be sent.
Send the letter.
Second to motion.
Motion made, second to take eight, nine, 10, 11. Clerk to read all items, letter to be sent of thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Item number eight is an order sponsored by Council John F. Hanlon's President in order accepting a donation of $100 from Mita Hurley to the beautification program. Nine is an order accepting a donation of $960 from East Boston Neighborhood Health Center to 2016 farmers market. Ten is an order accepting donations to the City's, City of Everett Celebration Account, and those are as follows: $500 from Kellington Ryan and $500 from Unibank. Item number 11 is an order accepting donations totaling $9,100 to the Human Resources for the Summer Jobs Program, and those are $800 from AG Quealy Towing, $800 from Spillane, $1,000 from Everett Car Service, $300 Honda cars of Boston, $800 teamwork cleaning car seps, $800 Dunkin' Galvanizing, $800 Pope John High School, $800 Levitt Corporation, Teddy Peanut Butter, $800 Everett Cooperative Bank, $400 Century Bank, $500 Sacro Plaza, $500 Sacro Plaza again, and $800 East Boston Neighborhood Health Center.
Okay, motions, motion for favourable action on the order, second. Okay, these are for all four orders. Please clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. You have confirmed all appointments. Congratulations to all of you. Please be reminded that you need to appear in the clerk's office within 30 days to be sworn in, okay? If you have someone here that should be here, you know, make sure they also know the same. Thank you. Clerk will read item number eight.
Mr. President, if we could, I apologize for interrupting, but if we could take eight, nine, and 10, 11, together?
Second.
They are together, eight, nine, 10, 11.
Take them, clerk, to leave. All right, just clerk, read the reading and just read the donation and let them thanks.
Okay, motion made. Do we get a second?
Second.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the chief of police, his mother and father is here. Would that be uncooperative to swim in now?
It'd be fine with me.
If you want, yeah.
I mean, his mom and dad are here.
Can we ask the Maisy family to stay?
Call me, call me.
Mr. and Mrs. Maisy.
Will the Maisys stay, please stay?
Chief.
Stay. Chief, would you like to get sworn in now?
Come forward, please.
They won't be here, you know.
Should we ask for the mayor to come down?
He's still there.
We can, go ahead, Mike.
Who got a camera?
Hold it up.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Good afternoon to me. Aye, Stephen Maisy.
Aye, Stephen Maisy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As chief of the Everett Police Department.
As chief of the Everett Police Department.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Laws.
Laws.
Ordinances and charter.
Ordinances and charter.
Of the City of Everett.
Of the City of Everett.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the constitutions and laws of the Commonwealth.
And support the constitutions and laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Fred.
Make a motion for five-minute recess.
We'll do one big group one, and then you can, yeah. You want your brothers in? Oh, watch out, big L. Holy cow. Go easy. Watch your step there, somebody. Good thing. Watch your step right there. Watch your step, go. Get right in there. Thank you.
Amen, again, I can't take this anymore.
So all these money orders, Counselor Dela, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor Rose was going to ask that they all be referred to item twenty-six. We can read the committee report, and then we can take each one of those items. Okay? So on item number thirteen. All in favor referring at item number twenty-six?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved, you have referred to item twenty-six. Clerk will read item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President to appropriate $17,217,988 for the fiscal year seventeen water soar enterprise fund budget.
Could we please refer the item fourteen to item twenty-six?
Motion made in second to refer the item to item number twenty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. And could we take eighteen?
Eighteen and nineteen collectively, they also need to be referred item to twenty-six.
Motion made in second to take items eighteen and nineteen collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk will read item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President in order appropriating, appropriating and authorizing bonded, bonded funds for enterprise departmental equipment. Item number nineteen is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President in order transferring $530,730 from the General Stabilization Fund.
Refer items eighteen and nineteen to item twenty-six.
Motion made in second to refer eighteen and nineteen to item number twenty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Clerk will read item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President in order transferring funds between various departments. Hold on a second. Yeah, my numbers are different here, that's fine. In order submitting the fiscal year 2017 capital improvement program, is that it?
No. Fifty-three and a half revolving funds to the City of Everett FY seventeen.
Item number fifteen is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President to authorize the fifty-three and a half revolving funds in use by many city departments for FY seventeen.
Motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will read item number sixteen on the agenda.
Item number sixteen is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President that $613,705 from various listed city accounts into other city accounts for year-on process to close the fiscal year with a budget balance is hereby approved.
Motion made in second for favorable action.
Yes.
Is this an order that we have to wait two weeks, or has to go to committee? Is this routine?
No, these can all go. These all have been done before.
So they're all routine, yes, standard routine, okay.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Yeah, good idea. Motion made in second to suspend rule thirteen, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rule thirteen has been suspended, we're still on item number sixteen. Motion made in second for favorable action, any further discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will read item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President in order appropriating funds for the 2017 capital improvement.
What was that, Michael, which one you got?
Item number seventeen is an order to stop the fiscal year 2017 capital improvement.
Okay. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Can you give a little bit more clarification?
Sure can.
What this is?
Let me give you the exact order. Jack. We have a communication from his honor, the mayor. Dear ladies and gentlemen, attached to the fine order to establish the fiscal year 2017 capital improvement plan. The primary goal of the 2017 capital improvement, improvement plan is to continue improvement of the overall planning and budget process for addressing capital needs, to ensure accountability as it relates to implementation of capital work projects. Some of the highlights is the 2017 capital budget, the plans for construction and renovation of various city buildings, including schools and Gledwin Cemetery, overhauling and renovating neglected parks, playgrounds, and recreational spaces, replacement of capital equipment at the DPW, and continued infrastructure repairs of roadways and sidewalks citywide.
Mr. President, could we invite the mayor before us on this item?
Motion made in second to have the mayor fill for it before. All opposed? Mr. Mayor, would you please come forward?
Call of the mayor, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions, anyone? Counselor McGlaughlin.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for appearing to the seat. Mr. Mayor, what, I'm a little confused, to be truthful, on the capital improvement plan. So you submitted a plan to us. Can you just give me a quick rundown of how this, how this works? So this order tonight.
Right.
What's in this capital improvement?
No, so the capital improvement plan is just a revolving document with, at this year, at this time, what we think in the next five or 10 years that we want to address, right? The, it's almost like a, almost like a bond bill, that the Senate and the House will pass with a million projects, and then it's up to us to decide which ones we want to do, and how we, you know, what, you know, based upon the debt schedule, how much, you know, do we want? My goal is to keep that debt schedule where it's at right now. Uh, we, we see a lot of the debt falling off from the schools, though we're looking at building a new one. But we have, you know, new growth coming, new revenues coming, so the, it's, it's kind of a wish list from all different departments. It's also a lot of things that, I think, a lot of you have asked me to, to, to do, if it's a street, or if it's a sidewalk, or if it's a park. But some of the things that you probably see come out to you this year will be the cemetery, definitely will be something that I think we, we're doing a good job maintaining, but I definitely want to enhance it. Some of the school funding, the bike path, the lighting, and the cameras, the bike path, which I know you and Counselor Delasola really want to see down there for public safety reasons. So it's, you know, it's just different projects, and then we'll, you know, we'll prioritize them, we'll also listen to what you think is a priority, and then we'll send them down to you for an authorization for, to vote. We're not going to get all that done in 2017. You know? Right, just like we, like, if you saw last year's, last year's capital improvement plan, there's a lot of things on last year's capital improvement plan that's on this year's. So it's, basically, it's an evolving document. Year to year. Right, so it could be, I don't know, how much is on there, $100 million? I mean, what was the total? What's the total number? Seventy million? Seventeen million. So, uh, we won't be coming to you for an authorization for all that.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
Counselor, look, DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify something. This isn't, we've already had the meetings on the capital improvement, this is not, no, this is a continuation of the capital improvement that we've already had, so I don't want the viewing audience to think that we're adding another capital improvement.
No.
Also, on the capital improvement, my understanding is when the capital improvement was put together, that we would continue to add every year, and no matter who the mayor is, they would follow that pattern, in other words, to con-
It's part of your city charter, I believe, now, right, Mr. Clerk?
Is that correct? Okay.
Look at the clerk, I, I think it's, it's, it's a, so the mayor has to present a cap- yeah, we actually had a deadline, and we actually got an extension from you all.
Right.
So you have to, you know, present the capital improvement plan. But we did it before that was part of the charter.
Okay.
If you remember.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On item number seventeen. Motion made in second for favorable action. Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin. Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will please read item number twenty.
Item number twenty is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President that $530,730 from General Stabilization Fund into various city accounts is hereby transferred.
Favorable action on the motion.
Motion made in second for favorable action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk will please call the roll on item number twenty.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will read item number twenty-one.
Item number twenty-one, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President that $192,126 from employee buyback stabilization fund into a city account is hereby approved.
Favorable action on the motion.
Motion made in for favorable action. Pete Napolitano.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, what, what account is this money being transferred to? What does it mean by city account? Could we be specific?
We have our, uh.
I believe it goes from the stabilization into the buyback account. I'm not sure, am I correct? Yes.
Yes.
The stabilization is one thing, and then it goes into that account to actually-
That's fine, I understand that, great.
Yes. Favorable action.
Okay, okay. Motion made, I didn't get a second yet. Second, motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion? Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order.
Mr. President, if it's possible, on items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, through you to the city clerk. Twenty-two. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Good to do, okay. Clerk will please read item twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as President that a, yeah, a list of vehicles are hereby declared surplus. There is more information. Communication from his honor, may I hereby submit for your consideration, order that the taxless of vehicles be declared surplus. Their reference inventory is no longer needed, as vehicles beyond repair and no longer in use, once declared surplus, by his honorable city council inventory be sold to public auction. So two, the hun- 2007 Ford 500, 2010 Dodge Charger, 2009 Ford F-250, 2010 Dodge Charger, 2001 Chevy Blazer, and a 2007 Dodge Charger.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Do we have anybody from city, city services, or? I, I have a question on a couple of the vehicles that we just named. I'm not sure who, maybe Mr. O'Donnell can come up?
I can't hear what he's saying.
Make a motion to-
Good evening, Kevin O'Donnell, Chief of Staff.
Good evening. Still, Donald, I don't know if you can speak on this, if you can't, it's okay, but how do we declare a 2010 vehicle out of service in the City of Everett?
I have no information on that, and that particular vehicle, so I'd be hesitant to answer.
I mean, there's a couple of them that were listed that I, I just find really hard to believe that they are no longer usable in the City of Everett, to be truthful.
Yeah, these, Counselor, just, just so you know, most of these cars have been in accidents, they've been declared totaled.
Most of our city DPW vehicles look like they've been, they've been through a war.
They're all down there, you know, if you, if you go down and look. I've seen, they, they have a lot of parking spaces when we get rid of these cars. Counselor Mangon? Outset, yes.
I, I'm really not pleased with the, the, I'm going to excuse Mr. O'Donnell with customary thanks, seeing that, I, I would like to send this to a committee, I'd like to have some clarification on why we're releasing the cars that are five and six years old from the city's fleet.
Make a motion.
Okay, but I, I would still like to have somebody come and explain.
Counselor McKinnon. Counselor McKinnon.
Um, are these, I, I just have a quick question, maybe it might clear it up. Are these surplus cars that are going to be sold?
Surplus?
Yeah.
No, they're, they're damaged.
They're damaged beyond belief?
Beyond repairable, yeah.
Okay. So they're not even usable for pots? Is that what it is?
I don't know, where would you put them? Once you get rid of one ninety?
I know, that's what I'm saying, so.
You'd have to have two cars exactly the same.
So.
So they're scrap?
They're scrap?
They're worth, they're worth their weight.
Put into scrap metal, or?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Excuse Mr. O'Donnell with a customary thanks and favorable action.
That's okay. Okay, thank you.
I believe I have a motion to refer to-
Yes, you do.
To-
Committee motion, we have a second on that. Sec, we have a second on that also. So the, the motion is to refer this item to the committee, what committee, Counselor, would you like it to go to?
Government Operations.
Government Operations. Motion made in second to refer to Government Operations. All in favor?
No.
All opposed?
No.
Clerks in doubt, all in favor, raise your hands. One, two, three, four. I'll send it down there, too. Five, so that'd be five in favor. Six, and I would, all, all opposed are sending it down there? One, two, three, four, five. I'm missing a, oh, six, okay. So, uh, it's, uh, it's still before you. Five down, five to send it down, six opposed. So it's still before you.
Five yeas, six nays.
The, the motion to refer to the committee on Government Operations has failed, five to six. Motion for favorable action.
Roll call, vote.
Second, anybody?
Roll call, vote.
It has to be a roll call.
Do we have a second? Motion made in second to, for favorable action on this item number, we, we talked, item number twenty-two to declare used vehicles as surplus. Any further discussion? Okay. Clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
No.
Counselor Delasola.
No.
Counselor DeFlorio.
What's, I'm sorry.
We're going to declare these vehicles as surplus.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangon.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Matouski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
No.
Councilor Napolitano?
No.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes. Five and six.
Seven yeas, four nays, Mr. President.
The order has passed. Clerk read item number twenty-three. Councilor Mangan?
Thank you, Mr... Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five collectively through you to the clerk, as long as everything's in order and there's no outstanding issues.
American Scrap Metal, my recommendation, refer that to the committee on, uh, community and business development, it's just a, a question of, the gentleman is not in that business at this time, but wants to keep the license with the land.
Okay.
I'm not sure that the council's willing to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, so I withdraw, and I would just make a motion, we take twenty-three and twenty-five collectively?
Second. Motion made in second, take twenty-three and twenty-five collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move, so clerk will read item twenty-three.
Item twenty-three, an order sponsored by Councilor John F. Hanlon as president, petition for junk dealer license Palmatutium Incorporated. Twenty-five is ordered by Councilor John F. Hanlon as president, petition for secondhand dealers license for Art Gold Jewelry Incorporated.
On item twenty-three and twenty-four, five, any further? And, second, motion made in second for items twenty-three and twenty-five. Clerk call roll.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Delasola?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio? Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Mangan?
Yes.
Councilor Matouski?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin? Councilor Napolitano?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order on number twenty-three and order number twenty-five. Order number twenty-four is before you. Clerk will read twenty-four.
Item number twenty-four is an order sponsored by Councilor John F. Hanlon as president, petition for junk dealer's license from American Scrap Metal Incorporated. Community development.
Please, uh, send to the committee of the community and business development.
Motion made in second to refer this subject matter to community and business development. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all in favor sending it to committee?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Clerk will read item, we're all the way down to item twenty-six.
Item twenty-six is a committee of the whole of the budget report with a recommendation for favorable action on the FY seventeen budget submitted by the mayor in the sum of one hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred, seventy-four dol, uh, thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Can we, uh, I'm sorry, Chairman, can we take items...
A favorable recommendation on the FY seventeen water and sewer enterprise budget submitted by the man in the sum of seventeen million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight, and a favorable recommendation on the FY capital improvement plan submitted by the mayor in the sum of eighteen thousand, eighteen million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
And thirty?
The committee report.
We have one more. Thirty?
Thirty.
Yeah, item thirty.
One, item twenty-six.
Yeah, but it hasn't...
But item thirty, I believe, is connected to...
Hold on, folks. Item thirty is a committee of the whole on the budget report in order with recommendation fiscal year twenty seventeen annual appropriation bill, as submitted by his honor the mayor in the sum of one hundred seventy-three million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars be passed.
Accept the committee report.
I'll accept the motion for all committee reports to be accepted, second? Motion made in second to accept all four committee, one, two, three, four, all five committee reports. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have accepted the committee reports.
Mr. Chairman, can we take items thirteen, fourteen, and eighteen?
Thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, and nineteen, did you say? Yes, you did.
Thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, and nineteen, yes.
Thank you very much. Motion made to take items thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, and nineteen?
Thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, and nineteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, item number thirteen, please.
Item number thirteen. Keep reading this again. Number thirteen. Is an order sponsored by Councilor John F. Hanlon as president, appropriation of the FY seventeen budget in the amount of one hundred seventy-three million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Motion made for favorable action. On the, on the motion, Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we've gone through the process and we've asked our questions. There were, the item we're looking at really of concern is not really so much long-term debt or its school department, it's the operation bu, um, operation budget. And this year, it's a little over fifty-one million dollars. And I have, I have a number of suggestions. Uh, I don't know how the council wants to handle it, if they want me to read all of them or go one by one, what, what's the pleasure, Mr. President? Okay. With that said, first, let me say, Mr. President, that the budget time of the year is probably my least favorite time of the year. It's a very difficult situation. We've got wonderful people who work for this community. We have a separation of powers and a separation of branches. The administration puts together a budget, takes a lot of effort and time to put a budget together, but as the legislative branch, it is probably one of our chief, if not our chief obligation, is to review it with a fine-tooth comb, and if possible, try to find anywhere that we can cut for the residents and the taxpayers. I know that we have, uh, the promise of tomorrow ahead of us, but we do have to deal with the finances that we have today. There are many, many people out there who are going without, and that is the purpose of these cuts. It is not an indictment or an allegation against any one individual or group, because as I said, I think we have wonderful people who work for the city. So with that said, I will start my proposals. The first proposal is on page three. It's in the mayor's budget. There's a new position for grant writer at sixty-five thousand dollars. I was not at that meeting because I was with Cardinal and my daughter getting a scholarship, but I did watch the meeting, uh, online, and I know that there was a lot of good that came from grant writers. With the new position, the policy position, I believe the mayor said that we received over three million dollars worth of funds. Clearly pays for itself. That said, the policy director had done that job, I think it's in the budget for a hundred one thousand dollars. I think the policy director can also continue to do the stellar job that she's done, so I would move that we reduce the salary lines by sixty-five thousand dollars, in essence getting rid of the grant writer. I put that in form of motion.
Make, excuse, we had a motion made and seconded to, that's to cut the fifty-five thousand dollars for the...
Sixty-five.
Fifty-five thousand dollars.
Sixty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sixty-five thousand dollars for the, um, grant writer. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Clerk will please call the roll.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Delasola?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
No.
Councilor DePiero?
No.
Councilor Mangan?
No.
Councilor Matouski?
No.
Councilor McKinnon?
No.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano?
No.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
No.
Four yeas, seven nays, Mr. President.
Four yeas, seven nays, the count, the, uh, order has failed to pass. Counselor?
Mr. President, on the same page, um, the, on the expense side, we have marketing business. It's a new line item this year for a hundred thousand dollars, and it was, from, from watching the meeting, it's meant to be a public relations piece, to get people interested in investing in the community and finding out about us. I really do believe that with the, uh, the coming of the casino, I think Everett is clearly on the map. I think the people will be fighting to get into the community. I don't think we need a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for that line item, so I would be removing that. And the other suggestion I have is with official celebrations, we expended fifty-three thousand, seven hundred in two thousand fifteen. Last year was budgeted at eighty thousand. We expended seventy-six thousand and change. This year, it's requested a hundred and thirty-five thousand, so I would request that we delete, um, reduce that down to eighty-five thousand, so removing fifty. So collectively from the expenses, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I put that in the form of a motion.
I'm sorry, Rosa first?
Are we, um, we're gonna go through this whole budget book all over again?
One by one.
One by one?
Whatever.
Okay, no, no, that's all right.
Mr. President, if, if I may, uh, what we're doing is, there were no recommendations at each of those meetings, and everyone had a chance to do that, uh, but I've taken time to look at the book, these are my recommendations. I know that, uh, we had the order in front of us, and I think the amount was gonna go up about a hundred and eighty dollars or so per person, but that was a single-family dwelling. We do have individuals that live in two families, three families, et cetera. I do think that every dollar matters. People are, shouldn't have to make a choice between what they're gonna spend their money on. I know, I for one, when I open up my tax bills, would wish it were a lower number, and I know I've heard all kinds of things bandied around, whether it's twenty-five cents per taxpayer, or whether it's fifty dollars. The bottom line is that it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money, and I think we have the solemn obligation to be very, very respectful of their money. So I will be making these, and, and again, whatever the pleasure of councils, I can give you them all at one time, and you can vote on them all at one time, or we can do them individually, but I do wanna, I do wanna put them out there.
Mr. Chairman, the reason, excuse me, the reason why I asked the question, and I didn't finish.
I, I was just gonna say, you have the floor, Rosa.
Okay, the reason why I asked the question is because I know if we wanna make a difference to the taxpayers, we gotta be prepared to cut five million dollars, three to five million dollars. If we're gonna sit here and cut two hundred and fifty thousand dollars like we normally do, it's, it's not gonna affect the taxpayer at all. We're not even taking a penny off their bill. So, that, that was my question, is are we gonna do this, do we have an amount, and then we can go through the, line item by line item?
The council has said that they will go...
Because if it's gonna make a difference, I will vote for it. It's not gonna make a difference, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Council said they would take it item by item, that's what they voted on. Counselor DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I respect Counselor Capone's recommendation, uh, in regards to the marketing and business line item. However, I don't think it's responsible for us just to expect development to come because of development that's already on its way. I think for a hundred thousand dollar investment, uh, to market our city, I, I can imagine a significant return coming on that, so I will be voting against that recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon?
Uh, could we have the CFO before us, please?
Is he here?
Yes. He's right there.
You got two more.
Yeah, do it, I'll second it. Mr. Chairman?
Could we also have the mayor before us too, please?
I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me. You all set? Counselor McKinnon?
To the CFO, uh, this question's to CFO through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Sir, Mr. Demus, there was a statement made tonight, uh, by my counselor to the left that we would need to cut a substantial amount. How much would that amount be to actually make a difference within the tax bill?
Certainly any cut is gonna have some impact on the overall tax rate, um, but given, um, the question that you're asking, it would be anywhere from three to five million dollars. The reason why I'm saying that is because, um, a lot of the numbers are still preliminary. We still have yet to receive all of the final numbers from the state as far as what our receipts are gonna be, um, as well as what our charges are gonna be. In addition, we're in the process of just closing out the fiscal sixteen-year. Once we get the fiscal sixteen-year closed out, we'll be able to make a determination in a submittal to the Department of Revenue in regards to free cash, so excess receipts above what we budgeted, as well as unspent appropriations. In addition to that, another component of how we're setting the tax rate is also our local revenues. We have yet to see where, um, we're gonna be for the end of the year, which is what we're gonna base one of our revenue sources on for next year. There are a couple of components that are within this budget that I just wanted to point out, um, for example, within inspectional services. You have an increase in professional services, an ISD of approximately one point four million dollars. That number is being offset directly by reimbursements directly associated with the wind project. Where we're seeing some of our largest increases within this budget, um, if you're looking to make some substantial cuts, would be the increase in personnel, you know, when you're looking at the police department and fire departments. There's where your most impact would be within this budget.
Now, the five million dollars that was received from the wind project, that was earmarked for what? Was that for police and fire? Or capital improvement?
Capital related, debt and capital related projects.
And we just added, how many police and how many fire?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? You're on to him.
We just, uh, we just brought, uh, we're bringing on, right now, we're bringing eleven firefighters on, uh, we're bringing four policemen on now, we have a, a call out for ten more, and our goal is to build that, uh, about ten to fifteen every year for about three more years going up, 'cause we have a lot of, a lot of members of the department also retiring the next three years, so instead of, you know, playing catch-up, we're gonna be ready for, you know, we are getting six, five million a year in mitigations for our police and fire from, from the wind, and that's what that's gonna be used for.
So that will be important to have them come in?
Right, and, and I know the conversation is regarding the tax rate. The tax rate has not been set yet, and I do plan on, um, submitting an order before you sometime in October, November, for the tax rate is set, to offset the tax rate and the water and sewer rate. It will be a substantial amount of money, um, so, you know, we're, I'm hoping to, uh, to actually reduce people's taxes and their water and sewer this next, uh...
Let me ask this question because it's relevant, um, so, the monies that are coming in from wind, we're gonna be utilizing some of that portion of monies to offset taxes?
Well, that five, that million that you talk about, that's a total...
Because there's been, there's been a lot of talk on the streets about that.
Right, so there's gonna be thirty million in total in, in, in the life of the construction? That was just a kind of a upfront gift to the city? Uh, we negotiated, that thirty million will go to either paying debt off or go into some capital improvements. Uh, one of the improvements that we will be making is the Seven Acre Park, um, with, um, and actually some more additional park space down there, um, but most of that money will go to offset some debt for schools, or, you know, the new schools that we're building, or, uh, you know, some, some improvements to the police and fire stations. That's just a thirty million, that's not including the taxes and mail taxes and hotel taxes that we, that we're gonna be receiving every year. We think that's gonna be about, uh, north of thirty, maybe around forty million dollars a year. And our levy is ninety-eight million, so we're gonna, we're gonna take into one development at least half that a year, so we could do a significant amount of reducing taxes if you'd like, or we could also do a little bit of both, reducing taxes and building infrastructure.
So my question to you, Mr. Demus, is what will we need to significantly reduce the taxes if we're gonna have a casino in our city, right? I feel it's a good thing, but we're still gonna have to deal with the traffic issues and stuff like that, so to alleviate those problems, how much do you feel that we could do to actually put towards the tax base and then make it a substantial benefit to the people that are out there?
Are you talking for fiscal year seventeen?
Yes.
Or are you talking for the five-year plan? I also did wanna just...
Seventeen.
Just for seventeen?
And then the five-year plan?
So how much are we looking for of using that money towards offsetting taxes and trying to reduce? This year, right now, in this budget, we're estimating using approximately four million dollars of those monies to offset this year's budget.
Okay, so four million towards the tax base to offset?
Yes.
And that would substantially reduce, would it stay a level, a level plan, or would it be reduced?
That will help the funding of the budget that you have before you.
Okay.
In addition to that, our current excess levy capacity for the city that was certified by the Department of Revenue for fiscal sixteen was approximately six million dollars, it was just shy of that number. Based upon our estimations and these calculations with the revenue, we're gonna be leaving we're going to be leaving our excess levy capacity for fiscal seventeen at approximately six million dollars.
So that means that we could have taxed up six more million dollars if we wanted to.
Well, we could get a better bond rating or whatever we choose to do.
Well, you could, yeah, yeah. I think you still could have, you could, you could, you could have taxed that six million and put into a stabilization fund. You know, which a lot of communities would love to be in our position. They're actually all, they're at that levy limit. They can't go above, they're actually at the ceiling. You know, we're, we're actually, because of our new growth numbers and it's not just the wind development. You have the hotel on Route sixteen. You have, you know, the Bat yard development, how that turned out, that was a positive, you know, worth about, close to.
So there's new growth coming every day?
There's tons of.
Can't anticipate how much more new growth, but.
Just if you were at the ZBA hearing a little while ago, the planning board hearing, there's probably two or three projects before them tonight. Look at their dockets. That will tell you what the new growth number is going to look like in the city. And then, you know, as values of houses, you know, keep climbing and as we improve the infrastructure and, you know, look at transit opportunities, you know, you will see the city become more valuable and I don't want to, you know, the picture for the community looks great, you know, so. But I understand, you know, you know, the policy director, I know we were all against it at one time and now we're far. And, you know, just yesterday, she got another grant, I mean, a five thousand dollar grant from the Attorney General's office, a thirty-one thousand dollar grant last week. In the last, the last two weeks, she probably received a hundred thousand grants. She really wasn't hired to do that. She really was hired to do, for instance, you know, the police officers go to a house, you know, routinely.
Policies, procedures. She has to write them.
You know, we, you know, one of, one of our state laws on the books calls for a person selling drugs out of their home gets a fine of a hundred dollars. You know, we go there once, twice, three times, it's a hundred dollar fine. You know, the landlord says, yeah, I'll pay the hundred dollar fine. I'll just keep, you know, they don't care because the tenant's paying them big money. We, we want to change those policies and.
I get it. I get it, Mr. Mayor. So that's the, you basically answered my question there with the, the amount of money that we're going to have to put towards two thousand seventeen. What's the five-year plan up? What are we planning to do with that?
As part of the overall document that you have in, that you have in front of you, when the mayor presented the FY seventeen budget, in that presentation that was included in the front of those binders includes the city's five-year plan, both from an expenditure standpoint as well as from a revenue source standpoint. So we have included that and you do have that document that was presented to you. And I'm happy to answer any questions related to that and that overall five-year plan.
So on that document that was related to the five-year plan, what I want to know is what are we anticipating on taxes or going towards the tax base to alleviate the tax burden on the city's citizens of Everett?
Moving forward, starting in.
Per year?
Per year. Moving forward, starting in FY eighteen, we're anticipating right now the tax levy to be, to be level for nineteen and twenty. With this casino coming on operational, we're thinking twenty, potentially nineteen. But what we're, where we're factoring in those revenue forecasts are the subsequent twelve and a half million dollars that the mayor was alluding to when he said that we're going to be receiving a total of thirty million dollars.
Yes.
So this year, we received the initial five million dollar payment that's been set aside through that special legislation, of which four million we're planning to use on the FY seventeen budget. And then moving forward as we continue, the city continues to invest.
FY eighteen, FY nineteen.
FY eighteen and nineteen. Right now, we're planning on utilizing around eleven million dollars to help offset the city's investment in the public safety areas.
I think this was all relevant because if we're going to have a budget hearing tonight, we need to hear this. So, thank you. Counselor McLaughlin?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, do we not have a homeroom petition right now for the next two years going forward that would essentially allow you to do whatever, not you, but the administration to do what you so choose with the twelve point five that is going to come subsequent to years, eighteen and nineteen?
No.
So it's under.
It starts to be voted by the city council.
Under host community agreement. It's, it lays out what the intent is.
The thirty million?
The thirty million.
It starts to be voted by the city council.
Even after a homeroom petition is passed?
Absolutely. I cannot just spend money without, which I could, but I cannot spend money without, without your approval.
So twelve point five, twelve point five the next two years?
And the five million, all, all comes into your discretion. All comes into the city council's discretion. You're talking about the two hundred fifty thousand dollar community enhancement fee?
Nope, that's fine. I, I, okay, that's fine.
Call for the question? Counselor DeFlorio? Oh, sorry, no, no, Counselor Napolitano.
I actually have no questions for the administration, but I do have a few comments to make, which I'll hold back until they're excused.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Keep the administration up here for all the questions. Are we all done? Can we excuse them?
That's, that's up to the council.
I would excuse with the customary thanks, unless anybody else has any questions.
You may have questions.
I, I would like to keep them here. If we're going to go line item by line item.
Excuse me. This, this body acts through the chairman, so make sure that you acknowledge that I acknowledge you for making statements, okay? And please don't talk out of turn. And what I want to say right now is that, you know, we have a motion on the floor to cut a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And from that, we have gone twenty, nineteen minutes on discussing everything but that motion. So what we should be talking about is the motion to cut a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was Counselor Capone's motion. So if, and, and if we want to talk all over the place, we'll be here till three-thirty in the morning, John's estimate.
Call for the question, Mr. President?
And so, no, there are other people that have, on the list here. So what I, what I'm, just what I'm trying to say is that please stick to the subject matter of whatever the motion happens to be, okay? So, Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you. Okay, I just would like to make a comment about the, on the motion. Okay, I would prefer, and I would recommend to my colleague through the chair that you mentioned two items on the second one. One regarding the, the marketing, the other one regarding celebrations. I have different opinions about both of them, so I would really like to see them separated, okay? Now, separate, I have comments on both of them, but until we get to that point, I, I really, I mean, I don't want to continue the general statements that you've just, you've just basically have told us that we need to get back to a focus.
The motion before us is for the two items. If you want to talk about the two items, go right ahead and talk about two items.
Well, okay, it wasn't my intention, but the, as far as the, as far as the marketing of, of new, of new members, okay? The administration has just said that we have a lot of people coming, a lot of dockets, a lot of, lot of growth that's coming through. Based on that, I tend to agree with, you know, Councilman Capone's assumption is that we don't necessarily need to spend that money, okay? We've done very, very well up to this point, and I don't, I don't believe that's the case in other areas. But in this particular case, it's a little after the fact. We now have the spotlight in, in the Commonwealth. We now have, we now have a lot of businesses coming in here to take advantage of space that we couldn't get anybody to take five, six, ten years ago. So I, I don't think, I don't think it's necessary to spend a hundred thousand at this point in that area. As far as the, this official celebrations, that I have a little bit of different take on only because I think that that money is then spent back and given back to the community, whether it's on Fourth of July or the various celebrations that the city does do, that I have less of an issue on. You know, I think as long as it's money that's giving back to the community, I think it's valued. The only other comment I have to make is regarding whether or not we need to sit here and make significant enough cuts to lower the tax rate, or if not, we shouldn't be making cuts. Now, I've said this for years, since the very first year I got on the city council. You know, when, when we've asked questions about these expenses and we've been told it's just a drop in the bucket. Well, the way you fill a bucket is one drop at a time. The way you overflow a budget, I mean, a bucket, is one drop at a time. So to me, that's not relevant. What is relevant is that it's important that we, we do look and where we can make cuts, we need to make them. I work customer service in, in my, in my private life. I'm thinking today of, of a seventy-year-old woman that I spoke to who was crying to me on the phone because of a two-dollar increase, two-dollar increase in her cable bill. Now, the thing is that to most of us, two dollars is nothing. You can collect forty cans and you've got two bucks. But the thing is, that's not the case. We need to be looking at all the individuals that reside in the city, whether they're paying rent, whether they're paying taxes. The bottom line is that, you know, I think it is prudent that we do examine these items a little at a time. And if we are able to make some cuts or some, you know, or turn it down a little bit, then I think we need to make it. But the idea of not making cuts because it's not going to be significant enough to drop the taxes, personally, I think that's ludicrous. And I don't think that that's the way to go. We need to take a look at this. And I would relate, I would, with that, I would like to stop, let the floor go back to the motion.
Well, he's next in line anyway, Counselor Capone. Counselor Capone.
Mr. President, I haven't spoken on the matter. He was the sponsor of it. I'd like to say make a comment.
Got to raise your hand so I know.
I, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Wait a minute. Okay. I just want to point out.
I'll defer, Mr. President.
That Counselor Capone has the floor. I mean, he still has a motion at the very beginning.
He made a motion, Mr. President.
We haven't got off of his original motion to go through the budget.
Right, that's what I want to talk about.
So right now, we're talking about only the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar cut, so. And, and first is Counselor McKenna.
On the official celebrations, I have a question from, not you, Mr. Chairman, but through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. The reason why this is going up, we're having a celebration, a historical celebration this year?
I don't believe, it's not this year, it's two thousand seventeen, correct?
Two seventeen, yeah. Okay, so that's not that?
Well, this is two, this is seventeen, yeah. I don't believe there is actually money in there for the, what is it called?
No, it's a.
Yeah, no, there is nothing in there for that event, the one hundred twenty-fifth anniversary of the city.
Are we, are we going to be looking for that or is this going to cover that?
We, no, this will not cover that. We will probably have to, I know that the chairman of that is, Mr. Chairman, and I know the city clerk is working on that with, with him and myself. We'll have to come back before you for something for that event. This is for.
So it'll be a separate line item for that event?
Whatever we do, we will have to come before you with a budget for that event. But this is strictly for Fourth of July, Christmas tree lighting, you know, Easter, Thanksgiving, Village Fest, thank you. The Beagle, yeah, the Beagle competition that we're doing in, I think it's July fifteenth? Yes, it's for different festivities in the city.
All right.
I just, I just wanted to know if that was raising because of certain events that were going on and you just explain it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the hundred thousand dollars for the marketing director, that's not, we don't have one right now?
No, so it's, it's strictly, it's not going to be a position. It's going to be spent on.
Promotion.
Promoting, promoting the Route six, you know, Route sixteen, Lower Broadway, the GE Parkland, on, you know, investing in Everett, talking, you know, highlighting the two billion dollar casino being built.
And that will come out of the community development office, maybe?
That will come out of, I think we put it in the, I think we put it in the.
It's in the mayor's budget.
The mayor's budget. But that will be, you know, contracted services, dealing with real estate developers, brochures, you know, that type, that, that type of stuff.
Well, I can see a need for it, okay? Because, you know, item number thirty, rezoning Revere Beach Parkway area where I happen to live. And I did talk to Mr. Sousa. You know, there's a lot of different things, and you and I've had conversations regarding, I'm going to refer to it as landmarks, the Max Discount Building, you know, the tire company and everything on, on, on Revere Beach Parkway. There's a lot of potential there to do what they did in Somerville and so forth. And that's what your intentions are. And I think you're going to need some kind of promotional material in, in doing that. And I'm in favor of the zoning issue that I talked to Director Sousa tonight about and in the past. But, you know, the other thing I want to mention, Mr. Mayor, is at some point homeowners can, and business people can't expect a, a reduction in taxes at some point with this, all of this new development, including the hotels. I mean, we're not just going to build the city up and say, well.
Not only a reduction in taxes, but also a good job.
Good job?
A good job.
At the casino?
Well, not only just there, at different hotels, different, maybe the.
Well, that's not the part I'm referring, I'm referring to, at least I was under the belief that once this casino is up and all the linkage that goes with that, that at some point, taxes will go down.
Right, we, we can, you know, with, we have a good amount of money in stabilization right now that we could offset taxes this year, this budget. And we will have a steady flow of new income coming in from the hotel resort, from other developments, other new growth. We, we will, we will have money to offset taxes. If that is the wish of the city council, I will be bringing down before you, before we set the tax rate in November, an amount of money to reduce taxes in this community. And the water and sewer. Water and sewer, I believe, is probably where I, I am most disappointed about. Taxes, you know.
Okay, well, that's, that's, could be included. But, you know, as we look back in our history, we got a lot of industry here.
Right.
You know, loads and loads of industry, and of course, they poisoned the land in the city. Now it has to be fixed. But, you know, everybody was jealous of the city of Everett having the lowest tax rate. Now, you know, we, you know, I don't know where.
We still do actually have the lowest tax rate.
Yeah, we, we do very well. But the idea, you know, my idea is that, you know, once all this development comes in, that, you know, maybe we could get back to that point. Geez, Everett's got the development and, you know, they pay lower taxes. Of course, property values will go up and they are going up compared to other communities. But, you know, at some point, you know, it's my.
The community tour, tour, I don't know, Malden, right? They pay, ask, some, I think some of our friends in Malden, ask them what they pay for trash fees a week.
Well, I'm against the trash fee, oh debacle.
Some people pay four, four hundred, five hundred dollars a month, a year, a year in trash.
The best thing that you did is, when you mentioned that, is these whale-out barrels. You know, I'm a big fan of recycling and so forth, but I'm going to vote for this hundred thousand dollars. As far as the celebrations account, we took that out of the city council's domain a few years ago, and now you handle those departments. But, you know, we need somebody to promote this community, you know, we're a hidden secret that's coming out of the box, so.
I agree.
You know, and I appreciate that. But, you know, at some point, you know, people, I think people expect they have lower taxes.
They're going to see it.
They're going to see it. I thought so, yeah.
And a lot of them have seen increased values in their property, which they're very happy about.
Right.
That's big, you know, now they have equity in their property.
That's true, that's very true.
They can take it out, fix their homes up, get more rents and, you know, there's a lot of things you can do. And we're helping a lot of people.
And I realize we need more, you know, police and fire and, and teachers to accommodate the new development. But that's just my thoughts on it. I'm going to vote for this hundred thousand.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, my pleasure, thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio? Okay, Counselor McLaughlin?
Mr. Chairman, a few weeks, last week, it was stated that we voted for the budget as a whole. We voted to take it out of committee last week. That was the vote, was to remove it out of committee. It wasn't to accept the budget as a whole. It was just take it out of committee and to bring it to this floor tonight. So Counselor Capone is correct when he says that we should go through these items and look at where we can cut. That being said, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Demus, can you tell me where did, where did we come up with a hundred thousand just out of sort of a starting point? Why not fifty thousand? Why not another number? Where did the hundred thousand dollars come from?
The hundred thousand dollars came from the individuals in the mayor's office that had started looking into putting together his budget. The policy director was involved, the mayor's chief of staff was involved. It was based upon, my understanding is it was based upon all of the wants and items that the mayor wanted to address in the city.
But could we do a decent job at fifty thousand this year and look at where we go with the fifty thousand this year? And then we increase it next year when we see that we spent fifty thousand with X, Y, and Z, so we give it to a hundred thousand next year? Is that a reasonable statement to make, Mr. Mayor?
You know, I, I got a, I don't agree always with Counselor DeFlorio, but I have to kind of agree with her tonight on, I'm just teasing you, I get a smile out of that. You know, a line item, a line item amount of money really is not going to save you much. Unfortunately, where you save money is on employees, you know? And where you save money on which employees, unfortunately, is public safety importance.
But as Counselor Napolitano said, and you see it every single day, Mr. Mayor, in your office, people are struggling at home to make paycheck to paycheck. You see it every single day in your office, and we talk about it quite often. And the state helps you, it's the same situation.
Tons of homeless people, we have people that.
Exactly. And homeless population is growing. It's a lot of bad, a lot of bad that is happening, unfortunately. So if we can make what some of my colleagues consider a drop in the bucket to us is not a drop in the bucket to some people, because they are a paycheck away from going into foreclosure.
Tax rate, towards the tax rate. None of, no one, and, and I'm not going to speak for, but no one underestimates the fifty thousand dollars to anybody, to any one of us, fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money. But to, to a two-hundred-million-dollar budget, fifty thousand dollars will not, you will have, will have no impact on the taxes. You want to make ninety fifty thousand dollar cuts, that make, that, that will make, that'll make an impact, you know, so.
And I didn't refer to Counselor DeFlorio when I said drop in the bucket. I said my colleagues used the word drop in the bucket, and it's not a drop in the bucket. Every cut, we need to look at and be serious. And you know, Mr. Mayor, you see it every single day when you wake up, somebody else that's a day away from going into foreclosure on their home and losing their family, and losing their family because of poverty. You see it every single day in the community.
We work with a lot of those things.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should start, call for the question. I mean, this has been a half hour on the same item. I believe people should ask questions.
I have the floor, I have the floor, Counselor. I have the floor. Stop, stop. The question is, could we cut the marketing and business line item in half? And that was a discussion I was having with the mayor. So now we can go ahead and call for the question. I have the floor, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Capone, no, I'm sorry, let me see, hold on. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Capone.
There, there was a request from one of the colleagues to split the two. I'm agreeable to amend the motion so that we take marketing and business separately, and then we'll do celebrations separately. I'd move on that point.
Do I have a second? Motion made in second to separate the motion by having one for a hundred thousand dollars and one for fifty thousand dollars. Hundred thousand is for the.
Marketing and business.
Yeah, and then the fifty thousand was the cut, reduced it down to eighty-five thousand. All in favor of making the cut, making the split, rather?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So what was before is now the hundred thousand dollar.
On the motion, Mr. Chairman?
On the motion.
Can we make it, can, is Counselor Capone opposed to making it a line and cut to make it fifty thousand instead of cutting the whole line item?
I'm sorry, which one are you talking about?
The hundred thousand dollars on the marketing and business.
Cut it to fifty thousand?
Cut it to fifty thousand.
That would be an amendment on the motion. Do I have a second on that? Do I have a second on that? You have a second. Motion made in second to amend the hundred thousand dollar motion to cut to fifty thousand dollars. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. With regards to the cuts, and again, I know that, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if, if you were in the room at the time, I was talking about the separation of powers, and I know it's a lot of work to put a budget together. And I know it's not easy. You know, you got to try to put all the numbers and whatnot. But our job as a legislative branch is to look it over and see what we can do. And what, what I'd like to do is just make the cuts and go forward. It's, any cuts that we make here aren't fatal. Over the course of the entire year, if it turns out that there's something big or something important that the administration wants to take advantage of, they have the opportunity to bring it back in front of us. And we could always appropriate money down the road. Obviously, from the administration's point of view, they'd rather know they have the money available to do what they need to do. But I, I would like to hold tight on the hundred. The, the cuts I have in total, if the council has any interest, is, is about a little over seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars worth of cuts.
I will, I will make a motion to renege my amendment to the cut.
Motion to reduce that to fifty thousand dollars? The motion was to separate them, we separated them. The motion was to separate them. We separated them.
Yeah.
Right. Now, Counsel McGlaughlin made a motion to cut it by, cut that hundred thousand by fifty thousand.
I withdrew it.
Oh, you withdrew it. I was in a discussion up here. So what's in front of us now is to, to make the cut of a hundred thousand dollars. Any further discussion on that motion?
I have a, a question. I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's Counsel Capone said that there's a total of seven hundred and nineteen thousand. I just have one quick question for the auditor. Is there any place that you think you can cut seven hundred and nineteen thousand without hurting the city?
I'll answer for him. No.
Okay. Go on. I'm sorry.
Okay. On the motion for a hundred thousand dollar cut, clerk, call the roll, please.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Sol?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel DePiero?
No.
Counsel Mangan?
No.
Counsel Matouski?
No.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
No.
Five a's, six n's. Five a's, six n's, uh, five a's, six n's. You have failed to pass the hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollar cut. We still have a matter of a fifty thousand dollar cut. Okay?
Mr. President, if, if you prefer, instead of a full roll call, you can do a voice vote, and if there's doubt, you can go from there.
It's still an order. We still have to go. We're just talking about the fifty thousand dollars.
Is it easier to do a roll call?
Probably easier than...
Okay, sure.
It's gonna be close.
Okay.
We originally had a motion to cut that. We had a motion for favorable action before. So again, on the motion for favorable action to cut fifty thousand dollars, clerk, call the roll.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Del Sol?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
No.
Counsel Mangan?
No.
Counsel Matouski?
No.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
No.
Counsel Palatano?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
No.
Four a's, seven n's, Mr. President.
Four a's, seven n's. Okay. Counsel DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to accept the FY seventeen budget as proposed. And if I may, on the motion, this budget was in the committee for, in the budget committee for, I think, two weeks. And there was plenty of opportunity for debate recommendations. There was, the chairman asked if there was recommendations after each department. If we're gonna sit here tonight and nitpick this budget, what is the purpose of the committee structure of this body?
Second the motion.
Counsel, Counsel Capone?
I would agree with my colleague, except for the fact that when we had the entire department here, all the department heads, we rushed this item right out of committee, sent it to the meeting this evening. So what that indicated to me was rather than hang around that night and speak to all the department heads who wasted their time to come up here, we decided to do all of this tonight. So that's why I'd like to do that tonight.
I have Counsel McGlaughlin next.
I wholeheartedly agree with Counsel Capone. Again, I voted to not waste their time that night and to bring it to the floor tonight to sit down and to negotiate, to go over this budget as a whole. I believe it, due respect, Counsel Capone spent a lot of time with this budget in making proposals for cuts. I think it is our due diligence to the residents at home that we represent, that we sit here tonight and we go through the motions that Counsel Capone has, has made or recommends. And if any of us additionally have cuts, which I know I do, we go ahead and make those cuts this evening. It is our job as city councilors to separation of powers. The mayor has been sent to the budget, and it is our duty to go through it and see where we can find cuts. It is not our job to ask them if they can survive or not survive on a budget cut. Thank you.
Counsel Napaltono?
Thank you. I just want to respond to my, my colleague's, evermore three's response about the, about the budget hearings. This is how budget hearings work. We have several meetings, not everybody's there, people come back, different perspective, find something in the book that they didn't, that they maybe didn't see the first time around. This is standard operating. This is how a budget works. This is how budget, every budget I've ever been involved with since two thousand has operated. So this is not anything different. There will always be something that got missed the first time around.
Thank you.
And I think it's important we keep that focus. The bottom line is the final vote. What you finally agree on to pass, that's where it comes.
Thank you. Counsel Mangan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually agree one hundred percent with Counsel DePiero. Whether it's at this level and other levels above us, state and federal, things go into committee, they get it debated in committee, and they get settled in committee. Whether you like to insert or not, it comes out of committee. It doesn't come back on the floor again, and you rehash the whole thing over and over again. Now, I certainly respect Counsel Capone's, has a recommendation to have seven, seven hundred and something thousand dollars, I believe he said, total. My whole thing is that during the budget meeting, and I know one of the meetings was, so I certainly respect that, he could not make it because he had, he had a prior commitment. But I asked after every single thing, does anyone have any recommendations? We had the budget books in front of us for a few weeks, okay? It came back in front of us. We had the department heads in front of us last week. Last Monday night, the roll, if not mistaken, the roll call was ten to one. Other than Counsel Capone, who I credit because he, he stood up and said no, everybody else voted unanimously. If they wanted to make the cuts, like I said, and go through all the departments, it should have been done last week, not back in front of a city council meeting tonight in front of everybody to go through. It should have, people should have agreed with Counsel Capone last week and said, and that's what Counsel Capone wanted to do the cuts, but he was forced to do it tonight because he couldn't get the support. Or else we wouldn't be here, be doing this now. Now, all of a sudden, people have a, a different perspective for whatever reason, but it should have been done in committee. I certainly wholeheartedly support Counsel DePiero's motion to approve the budget as submitted. Thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin, I'm sorry, Counsel DeFlorio?
I'm gonna say the same thing. Last, last week, we voted to accept the budget as a whole. Other than Counsel Capone, he was the only one that voted against it. Now, there's ten other people that want to open this process all over again. Last week, they should have voted no, not to accept the budget as a whole, and go through the budget even all over again. We could have called for a special meeting just on the budget. So that, that's my opinion, but thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Mr. Chairman, last week, and the clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a committee meeting. It wasn't a meeting of the whole. It was a committee meeting. We take recommendations every single committee meeting, bring it out to the floor, and then discuss it further. To talk about how the state does it, the state and the House of Representatives each meet respectfully, they present their budget, and then they go into conference committee. They deliberate it again in conference committee. There's multitude of chances to be able to discuss the budget in the House and the Senate before they pass the final. It was a committee meeting. It was not a meeting. We pushed it out of committee, as we do on many other items, and we brought it to the floor. We didn't vote to accept the budget as a whole. We took it out of committee. That's all my vote was last week, was to remove it out of committee and to bring it here tonight. Out of committee, not to pass the budget as a whole. It was not responsible to pass a budget blatantly across the board without having one discussion of a cut. It was to take it out of committee and to bring it here tonight. That's what the intention was, and that's why I'm fighting tonight to stand with Counsel Capone.
Call for the question?
I'm sorry, Counsel DePiero?
I want to move for the previous question, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we need a second?
Second.
Who's second? Okay. Motion made second, previous motion, previous motion stops all debate. All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Before the clerk reads it, if you could just clarify for the body what they're voting on?
Vote for, to move for previous question. That would mean that just stops debate.
Stops debate and the, and the previous question.
Sorry.
Stops debate and the previous question was Counsel DePiero's motion to pass the budget as submitted.
So if you, if you vote yes, you're voting just to end debate?
To end debate and vote on, up or down on the budget.
Okay, so you end debate, but then the piece will be here for you for a second vote?
The piece itself will, yes, it will.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's separate from this vote?
It requires a two-thirds vote.
Which is six. Okay.
Six.
Excuse me. Previous question means that debate has ended, so there's no further questions.
I'm sorry.
On, on previous question?
You need eight votes.
Clerk will please call the roll.
Excuse me. On this, your question right now is, is gonna be accept the budget as is, correct?
Question, no. Just stop debate.
The previous question ends debate, and then if it passes by a two-thirds vote.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the previous question is Counsel DePiero's motion to accept the budget as submitted, and you will get to vote yes or no on that question.
Thank you. Just wanted to clear that. Thank you.
Okay.
Clerk will call the roll. Guys, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone?
No.
Counsel Del Sol?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matouski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
No.
Counsel Palatano?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Seven a's, four n's.
Two-thirds of eleven is what.
Previous question fails.
Yeah. Question failed.
One, two, three, four.
The motion now before us is to, for favorable action on the budget as submitted and seconded. On this one, any further discussion?
Mr. President, can you repeat that again? So the motion?
The motion before us is to favorable action on the budget as submitted.
Correct.
And it was properly seconded.
Right.
Okay. Because previous question failed, it's still open for debate.
All right.
So are there any further motions on, I mean, any further questions on that motion? Counsel Capone?
The only thing I'd say would be a comment. I understand my colleagues wanting to just get to the, the budget and try to pass it in one shot. I would just have to say that, you know, just for my own purposes, if we do that, I think we totally abdicate our obligation to the City Council's legislative branch. So I would be voting against that.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to pass the budget as submitted, duly seconded? Clerk will call the roll.
No.
What is this on, Mr. President?
On pass the budget as submitted.
No.
No. Majority.
Majority.
Counsel Capone?
No.
Counsel Del Sol?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matouski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
No.
Counsel Napaltono?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Seven a's, four n's, Mr. President.
Seven a's, no n's, the budget has passed.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to call for reconsideration, please.
Second.
Hoping it does not prevail.
Cannot make a negative motion.
Motion made.
I apologize. Call for reconsideration, please.
Second.
My apologies.
Counsel Mangan?
I second the motion.
Second the motion. Motion made second for reconsideration.
Yeah, we're on the prevailing side.
We have to roll call that?
Yes.
Roll call. Clerk call the roll.
Counsel Capone?
No.
Yes.
Counsel Del Sol?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel DePiero?
No.
Counsel Mangan?
No.
Counsel Matouski?
No.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
No.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Eight, three a's, eight n's.
Three a's, eight n's. Reconsideration has failed to pass. Clerk will read item number all the way up to fourteen.
Mr. President, do you think we could dismiss the mayor and the budget director?
Make a motion to, excuse me, customer, thanks.
There may be more follow them, but you can go, but someone please stay in the audience.
At some point, I will have a question for the auditor.
Do the mayor?
For the auditor.
I asked him to stay anyway. Clerk will read item fourteen.
Item number fourteen is an order sponsored by Counsel John Fannell. As president, that seventeen million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars to operate the FY seventeen water sewer enterprise fund is hereby approved.
Favorable action?
Motion made for favorable action?
Second the motion.
Second on the motion. On, on the motion, Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I hate to do this. Mr. Demus just left the desk. If I could throw you, if you could please have it, Mr. Demus, yeah. And if, if you'd like, I could, there's a couple of different things. There's also capital improvement. There was, I can ask a general question on that, or just wait till it's performed, whatever you prefer.
Up to you, whatever you want to say.
I want to help streamline it as much as I can.
Streamline it as much as possible.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Demus, thank you very much for being here. With regards to water and sewer, capital improvement, these items, as we went through the budget hearings, we requested certain information. With regards to water and sewer, there was a question about professional services, how much of that was outside legal work. There was also a question about the rate that we're actually paying versus what we're charging. Have you been able to compile that information at all?
Just bear with me right now. In regards to the rate as far as MWRA is concerned...
What they charge us, correct?
What they charge us. What they charge us is approximately three thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars per million cubic gallons. What the water department is in the process of doing is trying to convert those charges into how the city of Everett does the billing. So we're actually trying to take it one step further for you. So we did get the answer. We're charged per million gallons. But what I want to do is convert that into the city's billing rate to give you a correlation as to how much of that is passed on directly to the ratepayers.
Okay.
The, the only other thing I wanted to add in is I also took a look at and did a calculation as to how much of the MWRA assessment, as well as our fixed, our debt costs related to our infrastructure, it represents approximately eighty-six percent of the overall water sewer budgets.
Okay. Very good. And just so I have that number again, was it three thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine per million?
It was.
Okay. And this isn't on here, but it is capital improvement. So I'll try to do it all, wanted to get out of the way. With regards to capital improvement, there was a request that any department that was requesting vehicles wanted to know what they had for vehicles at the, at the present time, what the condition we're in, what the mileage, when they were required. Have you been able to ascertain that information?
As of yet, I have not. The very next day, we put a request into DPW as well As of yet, I have not. The very next day, we put a request into DPW as well as other individuals that are in the process of track, keeping track of all of our capital assets. We are in the process of putting that together. It's just a significant process.
Okay. And I don't know if my colleagues would be so inclined on those, on that information, but if we were to hold off till our next meeting on capital improvement until we got that information, is that something that causes any issue from a financial standpoint?
No, it does not.
Okay. And then the last question I have for you. One of the other requests was that there may be a differential between what some individuals were actually being paid versus what we were appropriating for the salary columns. Were you able to ascertain that information?
I did, and I believe that very next meeting, I had provided to every one of the counselors a list at that meeting, an Excel spreadsheet with what each department head was getting paid, as well as what was being requested.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't see that. So, all right, thank you very much. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Are there any other further questions on item number fourteen, which is the enterprise water sewer enterprise fund? Any other questions? We have a motion for favorable action on the floor. Yes. Oh, excuse the customer. Thanks, thank you. Don't go away. On item number fourteen, no further discussion. Please answer the roll.
Counselor Capone.
No.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
No.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Mr. President, if we could take, oh, I'm sorry again, Mr. Clerk.
Nine yeas, two nays, you passed the audit.
Could I take item number forty-two off the calendar, please?
We have eighteen and nineteen still up in front of us.
Excuse me, sir.
Item number, clerk will read item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen, order sponsored by Counsel Jonathan Hanlon. The president that fifteen million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars to pay cost of various items in the FY seventeen CIP budget is hereby appropriated.
Favorable action, seconded, and Counselor Capone first.
On the, on the piece, Mr. President, because we're still waiting for information about the vehicles, status of vehicles, there are some vehicles in the capital improvement plan, I would ask that we could postpone this till the next meeting.
Next meeting. Make a motion?
On the motion, I also have a question for the next meeting. Is, over here says we're appropriating fifteen million, but we're actually borrowing fifteen million. So, is that the correct word to use? We're not, we're not appropriating fifteen million dollars.
Hold on.
Appropriate by borrowing the following amounts as requested in the CIP budget.
Oh, okay. So, it says borrowing. Okay, okay. I just want the people to understand that we're not, we're not funding fifteen million.
We're borrowing it.
We're borrowing it, which is going to cost one point eight million dollars a year.
We've got to pay it back, right.
For the bond, okay?
Okay. I have a motion for favorable action. Was there someone else that had a hand up?
There was a motion to postpone till the next meeting.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, that's what I meant, you know. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, you have referred this to the next meeting. Okay, item number, where are we? Eighteen, nineteen? Nineteen.
Item number nineteen, order sponsored by Counsel Jonathan Hanlon. The president that the amount of one million, two hundred and three dollars, two hundred and three thousand, thirty-six dollars to pay cost of various items of enterprise departmental equipment is hereby appropriated. Again, this too is borrowing.
Favorable action, Mr. President?
Second.
Motion made, second, favorable action. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Capone.
Mr. President, do we have a list of what these items are?
We have, I don't.
I don't, I don't remember seeing it, so that's why I ask.
I thought we had that before us. Well, we could do that one, too. Haven't, haven't-
If, if we could, I'd request that we lay this over to our next meeting.
Second the motion.
If we could get a list of what specifically is being requested for that one point two million, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Motion is to lay this over until next week and to get a list of what items we are purchasing with this one million, two hundred, three thousand dollars. Oh, yes.
I believe the motion was postponed.
No, what's his face, one second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have referred to the next meeting.
Can we take item forty-two off the calendar, please?
Second the motion.
Item forty-two.
Item number forty-two is an order submitting the compensation for his honor of the mayor in the Council of Provisions, Chapter two, Section two dash four A of the Everett City Charter, and Chapter three, Section three dash one C of the City of Everett Charter, and Chapter seven, Section seven dash one sixty-three, revised orders of the city. City council hereby amend Section seven dash one sixty-three B by adding the following sentence to the end of paragraph or subsection B. Salary of the mayor shall be adjusted by ten thousand dollars for every completed term as made.
Make a motion to send it to Ways and Means Committee.
Second.
Motion made, second, refer to the Ways and Means. All in favor?
Roll call vote, roll call vote.
I'm sorry, it is. No, it refers, not a roll call. All in favor referring it?
Aye.
All opposed?
It takes president. Don't commit to take president of any other motion.
Goes to Ways and Means. Clerk will read item number thirty-one.
Item number thirty-one, committee, the whole report and resolution offered by Counsel Richard Delasola and Michael McGlaughlin, represented from Nashville great, comes to speak regarding work done on Ferry Street with no recommendation.
Make a motion to refer back to sponsor.
Make a motion to accept the committee report first.
So moved.
Motion made, second, accept the committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to refer back to sponsor. Do we get a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have referred back to the sponsor. Clerk will read item thirty-two.
Item number thirty-two, resolution sponsored by Counsel Peter Napolitano administration, consider to community development set aside funds on the wind project when received to assist property owners in Everett Square in converting unusable business, second, third floor spaces to residential.
Mr. Chairman? Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you. I did speak with the Director of Community Development, and I know there's a little more going on. There's a little more information that, that will be available by just granting further time. So, I'm going to ask that we grant further time on this piece and ask her response back on the second meeting in September, which is September twenty-sixth.
Motion made, second, to request further time and until the second meeting in September. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So move. You have referred to September, second meeting in September. Clerk will read item thirty-three.
Item number thirty-three is an order sponsored by Counsel Jonathan Hanlon. The president, Section fourteen dash two, revised orders, city of Everett is by amended. By striking out the phrase Chief of Police and others, this order shall take effect on passage. This order is to correct contradiction in Section fourteen dash two of the revised orders relative to appointment of the police chief.
Favorable action.
Motion made, second, favorable action. Any discussion? Clerk will call the roll. This is an ordinance.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor DePiero. Counselor Mangan. Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano. Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, zero nays, you have passed the ordinance. Clerk will read item thirty-four.
Item number thirty-four, resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin to ask Mayor Jim Raffigan to name the gazebo in North Everett in honor of Everett Police Officer Glenn Riley, who passed away last year.
Mr. Chairman, if, on the motion, if I could amend this by adding Counselor Richard Delasola to the item as well, please? I'll put that in the form of motion.
All in favor? All opposed? So move.
As we know, we unfortunately lost Officer Riley last year in a very tragic situation here in the city of Everett. Officer Riley spent most of his career serving the residents of Everett and giving back to our community in so many ways, not just as a police officer on our streets. And it is only fitting that we named something after Officer Riley. And I think that the beautiful gazebo that the mayor had foresight on building down in North Everett in the main, Broadway section of the city would be fitting. But I would like to send this to the mayor and ask him for his recommendation. Maybe there's something else that the mayor's thinking of that could be named after Officer Riley. But I think we need to put the wheels in motion tonight that we start thinking about what we can name after this individual who gave so much to our community and unfortunately untimely lost his, lost his life.
Okay. Motion made, second. For favorable action, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the resolution. Clerk will read item thirty-five.
Item number thirty-five is resolution sponsored by Counselor Michael McGlaughlin, Richard Delasola, and Michael Mangan. To invite Senator Salty Commander to appear next meeting to discuss the upcoming 2017 state budget and all grant money received in the current budget year for the city of Everett from the state.
Mr. President, on the motion?
Yes.
I would like to ask if we could lay this over for two weeks and invite Senator DiDomenico up to do a PowerPoint presentation to the honorable city council. He has a lot of budget information that he would like to share with our city council. And I'm sure there is a lot of questions that we could get answers on from the senator on state funding and so forth. So, if I would respectfully ask that we lay this over for two weeks and invite up Senator DiDomenico to do a PowerPoint presentation at the time of the meeting.
We can ask him, but I don't know if he'll accept it. He probably will, but better understand that he still has a committee meeting, so what? Yes, I'm sorry, Counselor-
Mr. Chairman, I was thinking of having a separate meeting altogether. And like six-thirty instead of with the council, so that that way we have more time where he can explain things and it doesn't, it's not in the middle of our council meeting and we don't hold other people back in case someone needs to be appointed or whatever the case may be. So, my recommendation is if we could have a-
Motion, motion. Make a motion.
I can't. I'm sorry. We have community business. What time is that meeting? So, six o'clock? Would it be possible to have a-
I make a motion to, to have a meeting at six o'clock, and if it runs past the six-thirty, we can lay it over into our regular city council meeting. And speaking with the senator, I know that he'll be available that evening to come to the meeting to talk with us. Is there a way to suspend the rule? Okay, I'm sure that we can ask for a roll call vote to suspend the rule and to have a six o'clock committee of the whole to discuss state budget funding with Senator DiDomenico.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Second? Motion to suspend our rules and have committee meeting on six o'clock at, was it next, what's the date?
Twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh, on June twenty-seventh, for Senator DiDomenico to appear for a PowerPoint presentation on the 2017 state budget. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Need the majority.
No one said no, Mr. President. I think we're okay.
No, yeah, but they need the majority vote.
Clerk will read item thirty-five.
Thirty-six. Thirty-six.
No, thirty-five.
To invite Senator Salty to appear next meeting to discuss the upcoming-
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thirty-five, thirty-six.
Item number thirty-six, resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin, by Brian Dougherty, Mass Building Trade, the next council meeting regarding what steps are in place to ensure hiring of Everett residents first at the Wind Boston Harbor Casino Resort.
Mr. President, on the motion, I would like to amend this item by adding Counselor Mangan and Delasola.
Second. Motion made, second, to amend this thing by adding sponsors, Counselor Mangan and Counselor Delasola. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move. Counselor-
On the motion, I really think it's important to have a discussion with Mr. Dougherty. I believe that he is the local representative who will be overseeing hiring of the construction jobs and positions at the casino site for the four thousand jobs. And quite frankly, I don't know if the city council as a whole should put, should sponsor this together so that we make sure that we're fighting for the people of Everett to make sure that they're fulfilling the jobs with the residents of Everett, the four thousand. But I would make a motion that if all my colleagues are in favor, that we amend this by actually adding the whole entire city council.
Second the motion.
Motion, second, to amend this by adding the entire city council. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I see no one did this, so, okay. Quick question, does Mr. Dougherty know that he's being invited to the next meeting?
I believe that Mr. Dougherty has been spoken to that he would be requested to come to a future meeting. I'm not sure if he knows the next meeting, but that he would be coming to a meeting to discuss hiring practices with the city council.
Do you have, do you have his name and address and everything? Do you have how to contact him? Michael? Yeah, do you know how to contact him?
Sure. He is in the Boston Building Street Union and-
Would you tell our clerk after the meeting how to contact him?
Sure, I can absolutely pass on all information to him, sure.
Okay. On the motion, then, favorable action on the motion to have this at a next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move.
Mr. President, I'd like to move possible, well, reconsideration on item number forty-two.
Second.
Item forty-two, we want to move reconsideration, item forty-two, which was the salary of the mayor shall be adjusted by ten thousand dollars for every completed four-year term as mayor.
Under motion, Mr. Chairman, we cannot vote on this tonight.
This is for reconsideration.
Okay, but I just want everybody to know that we cannot vote on this tonight. It either gets laid over for two weeks or it goes into committee. So, we're going to reconsider it, to speak on it. I don't know what the, but go ahead. I just wanted to make that clear.
On the motion for reconsideration, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No?
Roll call.
Please call the roll on item number forty-two for reconsideration.
Counselor Capone.
No.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
No.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
No.
Counselor McKinnon.
No.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
No.
Counselor Simonelli.
No.
Counselor Hanlon.
No.
Reconsideration has, reconsideration has failed. Clerk will read item thirty-seven.
Item number thirty-seven, resolution sponsored by Counsel DePiero. Administration considers developing a senior shuttle program.
Counselor DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to refer this to the mayor's office. And on the motion, in essence, there, there's already a somewhat of a shuttle program in the city where they transport seniors to grocery stores and doctor's appointments. So, the sentiment of this is just to look into ways to expand the program. Thank you.
Can I get a second? Second the motion. Motion made, second, refer to his honor of the mayor. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? You have referred to his honor of the mayor. Clerk will read item number thirty-eight.
Item number thirty-eight, order sponsored by Counsel Jonathan Hanlon. The president should counsel for a lack of quarrels and not fear the members who make the effort to attack.
Mr. President, on the motion?
Yes. Counselor McGlaughlin?
In all due respect and fairness, I know that we all go on vacation during the summer and I know that we all enjoy time away with our families during the summer months. But I think that as busy of a community as we have and so much going on and so many things that are happening really by the hour in this community, not just by the day, I think it is sort of irresponsible for us to take two months off as a whole and not to come to at least one meeting a month. And I would like to put on a form of a motion that we have one meeting in July and one meeting in August. And I know that we can call for a special meeting at any time, but I also think that there is enough precedent pieces of business going forward in the city that we should be here once a month, at least in the summer, discussing matters that affect the residents of the city on a daily basis.
Counselor Napolitano?
Thank you. I'm going to second that motion. I mean, I agree. We, last year, we decided to forego taking the summer off. We had one meeting a month in July, one meeting in August, and I believe between committees, which was probably still one of the busiest summers. There's still work that has to be done and the legislative branch cannot just, you know, put everything on hold for two months. So, I support that motion and I second it.
Motion made, second, to amend the resolution by adding one meeting in July and one meeting in August.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on. Counselor DeFlorio.
On the motion, I understand where this is coming from because last year, we took July and August off and we, it seemed like we were here every other day. But the difference is, the administration, if they need us, they can call for a meeting. They can call for a meeting on Tuesday or a Wednesday. There were people here with young kids that can take the long weekend, they can take the Monday off or the Friday off, and call for meetings on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So, you know that the whole summer, people do go away. You're not going to have a quorum. I mean, for me, I don't care. I can be here every day. It's not a problem or an issue. But I don't think it's fair. I think everybody's entitled to a vacation, so I'm going to-
Okay. Counselor McGlaughlin?
I respectfully disagree with my colleague from Wood Five. As, as a new state employee, I know that she's here every day working in her job, and I know that we all have responsibilities here. We sure, we all take a vacation, take a week off, a week-long weekend, but you can't tell me out of eight weeks that we can't be here two nights out of eight weeks to do the business of the people that we were elected to do. And in my opinion, we should have a regular summer, but that's okay. We'll amend it by doing one a month. But you cannot tell me that we can't have a quorum out of eight weeks, two nights.
Any further discussion? Motion before us is to amend the order by adding one night in July and, I'm sorry, one meeting in July and one meeting in August. Any further discussion? Hearing that, clerk will call the roll. This is just for the amendment.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
No.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
No.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Make a motion not to take any time off at all.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a further motion that we take not, no time off at all.
The-
Eight yeas.
Eight yeas, three nays. The order has been amended to include one July meeting and one August meeting. On the motion for favorable action as amended, pardon, second? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Hearing that, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
No.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Matuski. Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hammond.
No.
I'd like to change that to one and all, please.
Eight yeas, three...
Eight yeas, three nays.
Eight yeas, three days. You have passed the order as amended. Okay. Thirty-nine, item thirty-nine, please.
Item number thirty-nine, resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin and Counsel DePiero, new tolls being implemented on both sides of Tobin Bridge this year.
I know, but, excuse me, folks, I didn't know you had a private meeting. Counsel McGlaughlin, your resolution?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
But it says new tolls being implemented on both sides of the Tobin Bridge. Is that for information?
I would like, I would like to send this to the Government Operations Committee. This is an issue that has come up most recently that could dramatically impact the community of Everett and especially the Lower Broadway section where Counsel Capone and I share. We see the impacts in the morning of pedestrians that take the local roads to skip the Tobin Bridge. And now we're going to dump the residents back on the other side in the afternoon so that they take, don't use the toll bridge, the Tobin Bridge, excuse me, for the tolls in the afternoon. This could shut down our community, cause public safety, and a real mess for our community. We need to stand up to the state and say we're not going to accept this and do all we can as a community to fight against their proposal.
Counsel McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think that maybe what we should do is probably send off a letter to our senator and our representative first to get their opinion on that as well as, you know, I understand there's gonna be a major traffic flow here when it happens, but we need to actually get an idea of what we want to do with this. And I think that we could get it from our state senator and our state representative if that would be directly from them. So I think that would be the way to go, but I'm game for anything they want to do.
Was it to, and send a letter to invite them to the meeting if we have one?
Yes, absolutely. Or if we could just send a letter to them without having that at the meeting, just to get an answer from them and then put it back onto the calendar and committee. That would be better. So we have information on that.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
I would like to ask that they appear. I know that I've had private conversations with both of them and I know that they are both very concerned about this matter. And I believe that we, we, I know the surrounding communities, East Boston, Revere, all of the surrounding communities are implemented in a program where they reduce the toll fee. And I know years past, some of my former colleagues and friends fought to make Everett one of those communities so that we could become a reduced community for the Tobin Bridge. They said no at that time, but if they're going to implement this, they have no other way but to say yes at this point. We need to become a reduced community and we, the senator and representative, not speaking for them, but I am sure, support our initiatives to fight against this. And I know that my colleagues in the past have done this.
Counsel McKinnon.
When we invite them, could we actually have them know that? That's what we're looking for so that they can answer any of those questions that we're gonna have from them.
Okay, we'll still send...
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? The motion would be to refer this to Government Operations and to send a letter to our senator and our representative asking them to appear at said meeting.
Could we also ask for a representative of Mass. DOT or of the, I'm not sure, Charm Pike Authority, maybe?
Representative is on DOT. He's on Department of Transportation.
Fantastic.
On the motion then, all in favor? All opposed? So move. You have referred to Government Operations inviting both our state reps. Item forty.
Item number forty is an order sponsored by Counsel John F. Handler's present to amend City Council Rule 42, quorum, absences of members. Let me get this to you. With this, as many of you know, the, here it is. Whereas the president of City Council is an ex officio member of all City Council committees and whereas said president is often called upon to make a quorum at committee meetings and whereas City Council rules prohibit the president from voting in committee under these circumstances and whereas this prohibition could result in a single vote deciding an issuing committee, be it ordered by the City Council, City of Everett, as follows, that Rule 42 of the rules of City Council is hereby amended by inserting at the end of the last sentence the following, notwithstanding any rule to the contrary, the president's presence is needed to make or maintain a quorum. He shall enjoy the full rights of a member of said committee, including the right to debate and vote.
Counsel...
Under the rules, this needs to be laid over for, till the next meeting.
Counsel McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a great piece. I think we need it. I'm actually, I was thinking about putting an alternate piece on as well to see if we can put an alternate counselor on as well as the summer months come up, if people are taking vacation or they're gonna be missing meetings or whatever the problems may be with them, we need to have as many people as we can to actually hold our committee meetings. And I feel that it's very important, but I wanted to thank you for putting this on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion made in second to lay it over until the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move. We're on item forty-one.
Item number forty-one is resolution sponsored by Counsel Frank Capone, that Katie Rogers being promoted to public safety to discuss environmental impact of plastics.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to make a motion to amend the piece to add Counsel Michael McGlaughlin as a co-sponsor.
Motion made in second to add Counselor Michael McGlaughlin on this item number forty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have added Michael McGlaughlin.
On the piece, thank you, Mr. President. On the piece itself, I know that Ms. Rogers is very passionate about a lot of the issues that involve the environment and she has quite a bit of research and she'd like to share that with the Public Safety Committee. So I would like to refer this piece to Public Safety.
Second motion.
Government Operations.
Government Operations. Same thing. Motion made in second to invite Ms. Rogers to Committee on Government Operations to discuss the environmental impact, environmental impact on plastic. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing that, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You have invited Ms. Rogers to the Committee on Government Operations. Item forty-two, we did. Item forty-three.
Item number forty-three is an order sponsored by Counsel John F. Handler to amend zoning ordinance in section seventeen, off-street parking by inserting statement of purpose.
Other motion? Referring.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see that Mr. Tony Sousa, the Director of Community Development, is here. Can we just ask him to appear relative to this piece?
Sure can.
Thank you. Good evening. Name, please.
Good evening, Tony Sousa, Director of Planning and Development.
Thank you for being here this, this hour in the chamber. But I, I and a few other councilmen, what exactly is this off-street parking issue?
Sure. So section seventeen, and its title, off-street parking, is part of the Everett zoning ordinance. And through the process, working in this community and with, of course, our planning board in this council, there's some need to look at doing some review and possibly revisions to, to section seventeen, off-street parking, specifically, for example, inserting a statement of purpose. And I would further add to look at definitions and to, again, review and revise parking requirements as necessary. For example, and on this matter itself, I would request in the process, being to amend the zoning ordinance that be referred to the planning board, and that we would be looking at the different parking requirements for different types of uses, whether it be for residential or mixed-use development or for industrial. I think it's well worth a time to take a fresh look at the requirements that we have in place. I'll give you an example. Back in 2014, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council did a study of parking regulations in the greater Boston area. And our city, for better or worse, had some of the higher numbers for parking requirements. I think it's healthy and from the feedback that I've received from even some members of my planning board and even internally, to take a fresh look at this. As things are developing, from a residential, industrial, and commercial standpoint, it's important that we keep up with regulations that seem to make sense and find the right balance. So that's the, the intent of this is to basically to go back, review section seventeen in light of what our neighbors are doing, in light of what, what we're seeing in our own community and make sure that's relevant and current.
Okay. So if I could, Mr. President, just finish up here. So this is ultimately gonna go to the planning board for their approval, is that right?
And the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but it will go to the planning board to make a recommendation, then back to the council for your review and consideration.
So this is a procedural vote tonight?
Just from my respective requesting that, that this be sent over to, to the planning board so we can do our review and ultimately give you a recommendation for your review and consideration.
Right. Okay, thank you. And you have another item here, number forty-four, so please don't leave the chamber until you take that.
Counselor? Hold on to that item. We're on forty-three right now.
Right.
If you'll just wait with us.
Excuse the customary thanks temporarily.
The customary thanks.
Sit tight. On this piece, refer to the planning board.
Refer this item to the planning board. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You have so referred to the planning board. Clerk will read item number forty-four.
Item number forty-four is an order sponsored by Counsel John F. Handler to amend section twenty-one, address the limited district of the zoning ordinance by deleting it, replacing it by adding the areas of section twenty business limited district.
Thank you. Counsel Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. To our planning, Community Development Director, Mr. Sousa, you know, we've had many discussions and we had a meeting with the mayor and many residents of Bailey Street, Parrish Street, Lower Lewis, business people along the Parkway.
Yes.